It doesn't taste like this.
Okay, Mayor, it is six thirty.
My call is meeting the order for later than eleven twenty twenty one will be called through call the roll.
Mayor Richard Boss. I'm sure he said here, right?
Yes, I did. I said here.
Mayor Protem Nadia Saitz. Commissioner Sharon McDonald. Commissioner Josh Reardon. Commissioner Susan Payne. Commissioner Dusty Wright. And Commissioner Jason Baldwin. City Manager Brian Caesar.
Here.
The Attorney Patricia Bangoche.
Here.
Clerk is present. Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Rachel. So everyone, please stand and place a flag. We're going to have the invocation given by court facial views and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Commissioner Baldwin.
Dear heavenly Father, we come to you in prayer, just praising your name for this beautiful day that you blessed us with and dear God, also asking for guidance for our commission and for the just what's going to happen in this meeting. Dear Lord, I also ask that you be with those that are presenting, dear God, and that you will help them in their presentations. And dear Lord, we thank you for our help and we just ask that you bless everyone here that's here tonight, dear Lord, and that you bless families as well. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On to the agenda. Do I have motion to approve the agenda as stated?
Second. Second.
For the motion to accept the agenda as presented from Commissioner Payne, do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Second from Commissioner Reardon, always in favor. Aye. Aye, close the poll ahead. Motion passes seven zero. We'll move on to public comment. Do we have anyone that has contacted you for public comment?
Mr. Mayor, we have no public comment tonight.
Thank you. Move on to the city manager's report. We have Brian Caesar, our city manager here. Good evening, Brian.
Good evening. I'm only going to speak about one item tonight. A few weeks ago, I sent out a memo over email to all the commission about how we would be moving forward, hopefully getting into the commission chambers and navigating our way through the various color schemes. As it has been through the entire pandemic, it's been a moving target. Just yesterday, sixty percent of the state has received their first vaccination. The governor, in one of her last press conferences, stated that when sixty percent of the state had received both doses, that she would be reopening the, everything in the state. Not a whole lot of guidance passed that. So what we staff have originally planned to do, the setup that you're in right now over at the civic center, tonight was going to be the last night that you would, would have been in that conference room. Then we were going to try and move you all out into the, into the main area. Looking at the calendar and the timeframe, it looks like there's only two, possibly three more meetings before the state is, is fully open. We haven't really tested the, the main area. So what we would like to do as staff is to continue to allow you, all those of you that want to, to meet at the civic center. Right now, facility maintenance and the MIS department and other city staff are finalizing the work that is being done in the chambers to improve the audiovisual system. What we're doing right now, this is not going to go away. Now, commission will be back in the chambers, the public will be able to attend. But this is the direction that, that most places are going now. So like in the future, tonight, we have, we have our, our auditors on to give the presentation. There normally, in past years, we would have presenters come down from Albuquerque, Santa Fe, et cetera. That's no longer going to, to be, to be necessary. Not that they may not come down for stuff like this, but they're going to be able to do it from Albuquerque, Santa Fe, wherever they're at. Most of the commission will remember past meetings where a commissioner or a staff member hasn't been able to attend for one reason or the other, but they wanted to be present during the meeting to listen to or vote on particular items. In the past, what we had to do as staff is take one of the conference phones, take one of our mics down to it and hope that the people in the commission chambers could hear the commissioner or the staff member and vice versa, that the person calling in could hear. With the upgrades that are being made in the, in the commission chambers to the, to the audiovisual system, the, the setup that we had, had in there previously, we will be able to, or actually Rachel will be able to bring people in via Zoom. So the public will be able to, to attend without having to come in person, will be able to watch, participate. So, bottom line, what I'm, what I'm asking is that we continue as we are right now until the governor opens up the state, which should be in the next, I believe it's twenty-six or twenty-seven days from the, from your first shot to your second shot. If sixty, if the average population in New Mexico, sixty percent have already received their first shot, they're going to get their second within that, that next twenty-six, twenty-seven day period. And that's all I have.
Move on to remarks and findings by the city commission. Any further written comments? I would like, I'd like to point something out. Starting last, just past Sunday, began National Police Week, and it's May ninth through May fifteenth. Fifteenth is actually a memorial day for fallen officers. I'll be reading the proclamation on purpose, say, to do that. I want to encourage everybody to, if you see a police officer, take, take an opportunity to thank them for their service, take that opportunity to thank them for their service and maybe even buy a copy or something. You know, our police officers, I think, have been under a lot of pressure across this country for some time now. And, I don't know, I don't know, but I think every commissioner here reads the reports that we did on the police logs, and we know what our police officers are facing out there, and they don't deserve that crap. They really don't. It's, it's, we're here on the news. What they deserve is our full respect and admiration and, and I hope that everyone gets an opportunity to give them, give them that. That's all I have to say. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Would any staff or commissioner like to pull an item from the consent agenda? If not, do I hear motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? I'm working to approve the consent agenda as, as presented. Sorry, as, as presented. Do I hear a second? I've, uh, voting from, uh, Commissioner Wright, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Reardon. Will a court please call the roll? Wait, you don't do that before call, hold in favor. Aye.
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 Motion passes seven zero. We want to do business. Adam Ford, consider acts upon approval of the fiscal year twenty-two, fiscal year twenty-five, on the Public Safety Officers Association contract for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two to fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. We have a witness, Matt Kenford, I guess, please go to the director. Good evening, Ken.
Good evening.
Does anyone have any comments on that? Do you have your presentation? Is there a presentation on that? I don't think Kim did. Still not there? Yes, can you hear me, Kim?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Do you have a presentation for us this evening?
Very briefly, yes. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Commissioners. Included in your packet is the AFSO contract as tentatively agreed by the union and the city. Also included in the packet is a brief explanation of the major changes and associated costs with the contract. As mentioned in your packet, it's becoming more difficult to recruit employees and then retain them once they're here. The focus on this contract was to create a contract that would help us fill our openings and then retain the employees to create an experienced and well-trained workforce, thereby reducing the costs associated with constant turnover and vacant positions. Although negotiations took longer than anyone expected due to COVID and the inability to coordinate schedules at times, I believe the contract is mutually beneficial and everyone walked away pleased with the final product as both parties had at least one objective in common, and that was recruitment and retention. So that's all I have unless there are any questions for, from you.
Any other questions? There are motions starting on four. Motion to Commissioner Payne to approve on four. Commissioner Wright.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Congratulations on getting that done. Thank you, Kim.
Sir, Mayor, I, I couldn't hear who approved, who approved it and who seconded. Can you repeat that again?
Susan, may, may you make the motion.
Commissioner Payne made the motion. Commissioner Wright seconded.
Make the second.
Sorry.
Okay, we'll move on now to item five. Consider acts upon resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifteen for the acceptance and approval of the fiscal year twenty audit. We have witness Alex, A.J. Bowers from CRI. I believe we do. A.J., are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
That's good. Good evening. We can hear you. That's good.
Excellent. Fantastic. Can you now see my screen as well?
Yes.
What was that, Mr. Mayor Boss?
I said, very good to have you with us this evening.
Oh, I'd, I'd rather be on the road to Alamogordo right now. I haven't been at a client in a year and I've got an itch, so it's okay. But at the same time, I like that we're able to do this remotely because this is a long trek for, for us to do. So I thank you for humoring us on this and so we'll just kind of walk through that presentation. You should have a copy of it as well, as well as the financial statements themselves. So first off, again, my name's A.J. and I'm a partner with Carwigs in Ingram, actually up here in Albuquerque. So I want to, I want to thank you guys for working with us again. We're just kind of going over that presentation for the, the, the audit really from, from last year is, as you know, we're getting ready to get started again. So the agenda itself, and if you have any questions, just stop me. I really don't, I don't mind. We can go through those, but the, we're going to kind of hit some, the timeline, the highlights, the, the reports themselves, the single audit items, and just some other things that are coming up in the industry, other matters that we see and just, you know, new and upcoming standards. So as we talk about the audit and that timeline of the audit, you know, the engagement letter, we really started it back in July last year. We did our planning July and August. We did almost all of this audit remote. We did a little bit onsite in relation to reviewing some personnel files, census things, etc., etc. Of, the majority of it was done remotely. We had the financial statements findings were delivered in December. The exit conference was the fourteenth. That's when we dated the report. The regulatory deadline was the fifteenth and it was up there. It was released from the state March twenty-seventh, and so here we are presenting it today, you know, af- after the fact. So the main thing in those auditors' reports, that financial statement, that two-hundred-and-twenty-page document, what is your financial? We do prepare them as a service, but our real part in those financial statements is that report in the front, the independent auders' report, and then there's two reports in the back. And so just so you know what those are, the opinion on the financial statements is unmodified. So that's the best opinion available. What it states is that the financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with GAAP, and there's no areas where we could not render an audit opinion or gain sufficient appropriate audit evidence. So that's a really good, that's, that's the first thing. That's not, we didn't anticipate anything different. We would have communicated with you way, way in advance. But what that stating is that the, the city has sufficient appropriate audit evidence to substantiate the numbers to that material balance. Okay, we don't test every transaction. We don't test everything to every penny. But what a user, the financial team is going to be looking at, they're, they're to the highest opinion. There are two other reports in those financial statements that are towards the back. Every audit in the state of New Mexico is done under government auditing standards. That's that gagis, generally accepted government auditing standards, internal control. So what we do is we evaluate internal controls and we report anything that we find in that report. So any, anything that we have to, to look at is, is reported in there. Now, that's negative assurance. So what that says is we do not render an opinion on internal controls. These are items that we identified. Others may exist that we did not. Okay? The only thing that we have noted in there that's a reportable item is we had two what we call NMSA findings. So there are no items that were to be reported under government auditing standards, but we had two items that were noted under New Mexico requirements. So really clean, really good job. Like I said, there's no materiality threshold. We'll touch on what the, those are and they're detailed in the findings themselves, but really, really clean audit. And then the last report is a report on compliance in relation to the federal awards. So we tested that disaster, the disaster grant, the public assistance, and it was an unmodified opinion and we didn't have any findings noted. So what we have to do is when we do the, the s- single audit and the federal awards, if you expand over seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in federal awards, we have to evaluate and test a major program. This is what we tested. We have to test a whole bunch of compliance requirements and controls around it and render an opinion upon that compliance. And so our opinion is unmodified. Again, a nice, clean audit. So that's a, that's a big, you know, kudos to the team in, you know, kind of what's a crazy year. So especially, and I don't, it's still been kind of crazy. So really good to be able to meet, meet all the targets that we set out at, at the onset of the audit. So what we like to kind of show, went over these for the most part at the exit conference as well, but I like the entire commission, be able to see what the financials look like. So when we talk about a five-year trend, to kind of give you an idea of what that, that cash and the assets liabilities are all looking like. So really within that, the the assets, there's a five-year trend, a steady increase over time. There were decreases in cash and investments in eighteen and nineteen, followed by an increase in twenty-twenty with those. So I know that everyone's aware of kind of the way the cash balances have dipped and then they came, they've come back up a little bit. Liabilities are really going to closely follow the, the net pension liability and the OPEB liability. And then the city's issued debt constantly over the, over the period. And then your, your net position's your equity. So it's going to show a decrease over that five-year trend and then, you know, a twenty-twenty increase with a depreciation. So as we kind of look at the assets themselves, that top line is your total assets. And so you can see kind of where that's been over, over year, over year, and that, that dip in twenty-nineteen, that yellow line is your capital assets. So any of your fixed assets and where those kind of sit. And then that cash balance that you had from twenty-sixteen, and then as it really dropped between seventeen and nineteen, and then back up here in twenty-twenty. So you know, I know you guys did a lot of budgeting work and a lot of work in that timeframe to kind of right the ship and some of that cash stuff. So you can see it with, within those trend lines. At the same time, with your liabilities, those total liabilities have kind of dipped over this last year. So if they went from sixty-nine million to sixty-six million, and where you kind of see those, the long-term liabilities, that's going to be your debt for the most part. So you're consistently issuing debt, but it's been kind of coming down as well. That yellow line is that net pension liability and that OPEB liability. That's your proportionate share of para and RHC. So that's that's just the way it gets broken out based on how much you contribute to those pools and, and the way those liabilities get tracked. So you're going to see that close variation. It did drop a little bit between nineteen and twenty. Part of that's the way the investments are, they're in arrears, but nothing that's out of the ordinary, and that's just kind of what the state looks like. Net position, the reason I like to show you that that net position, that equity, it's dipped back, it's come back up to sixty-five million total here in twenty-twenty. One thing to watch is that unrestricted number. And so when you see that, that's where that net position sits, or the net, the net pension liability and the OPEB liability sits. So when you go out for bonding and they talk about bond ratings, the equity does matter and they do look at those numbers as it relates to net pension liability and OPEB. And I know that's a state liability. I'm only reporting on the past of what's already happened and how we have to be on there. That's something that obviously the state has to deal with. And at some point, will, and that's something you work with the legislator on, but this is an understanding of the numbers to know kind of what does affect your bond ratings. So this is a very common position of where people are. Now, this is only in the governmental activities. It's not including the business types on this one. This is just for the government itself. And then the net income itself, revenues decreased between seventeen and nineteen. They rebounded to the fiscal year twenty-sixteen levels with the grocery receipts taxes and then expenses, you know, an increase over time, or we're seeing really through twenty-nineteen with that reduction in twenty-twenty. So when we kind of look at what the revenues and expenses are, that top line is the revenues, the expenses are that bottom line, and you can see where they kind of matched there in twenty-nineteen and then kind of had that gap again, a little bit of, you know, that, showing that fiscal changes. The city balance sheet, when we look at the business type activity, so this is going to be, you know, the water and sewer and all the above. To, with that joint utility, you've got that steady increase over time due to those capital projects. The liabilities, again, you're going to have that in NPL, et cetera, and then the net position itself. So when you look at where those assets are, again, total assets, one-hundred-and-thirty-six million. Most of that, almost one-hundred-and-twenty million is in your fixed assets and then your, your cash has been pretty steady. It was about a million-dollar decrease between nineteen and twenty, but as you're building things, of course, cash goes down. So nothing that's out of the ordinary there because also your debt has decreased in that fund from twenty-six to twenty-two over that, that five-year period. Your total liabilities have been pretty consistent. And then again, you have that net pension liability and that OPEB, and here's your net position that's related to that. So that total net position is one-hundred-and-two million. Most of that's in your fixed assets that are on the books. And, and then the unrestricted piece is anything else, but it does include that net pension liability in there. Okay? So when we look at the income statement itself, your charges have been pretty consistent. Your grants have an increasing trend and then your expenses mostly consistent after the increase in sixteen and seventeen. So as you can see, those revenues, there was that spike over these last few years. It's been with that steady increase from eighteen to twenty, and then your expense has been pretty, pretty consistent. And then when we look at the general fund, that's going to kind of be your main operations. Okay? So you transfer money in and out of here to supplement other things as well. So when you have, again, your revenues consistent over that five years with that increase in twenty-twenty related to grocery receipts and property taxes and your expenditures decrease after a peak in twenty-seventeen. So your cash is a pretty steady increase in sixteen and nineteen and then increased again in twenty-twenty. So with, based on that reduction in expenditures. So as you can see, those revenues, now this does not include your transfers. This is just revenues and expense to, so it shows that revenues are outpacing those expenses and then you're, you are transferring to supplements and other funds, which is normal. But that monitoring, that is helping with that cash increase, right, from that seven million to eleven million over this last year. So I don't think there's anything out of the ordinary, but I always, I like to see things in a graph and I think it really helps to show kind of what the city's been doing over these last few years. The single audit highlights, as we talked about, the unmodified opinion. We do look at this disaster grant itself. When we talk about the direct material compliance requirements, these are the ones we have to test. We test for allowable activities, the cost, natural requirements. Did you use them in the proper timeframe? You know, did you account for them appropriately as part of the special test? So we do test controls around them in compliance with all six of those compliance requirements that were determined to be direct and material, so they could affect the compliance. And there were no findings noted. Okay, so one last thing on our responsibility again is to form and express an opinion about the financial statements, whether they're fairly presented. They are your financial statements. We do prepare them as a service. And so we do obtain reasonable, it's not absolute assurance about the financial statements that are free from material misstatement. We do consider the internal controls for the purpose of designing our audit procedures and then we are communicating all significant matters related to the financial statement audit to you. As part of your responsibility, you're charged with the oversight. You establish the controls, you, you're, you're monitoring the accounting policies and principles, the fair presentation themselves. Y'all have designed and implemented processes to prevent and detect fraud and the governing body participated in the exit conference, entrance conference, received the required communications, et cetera. Okay? When we talk about the findings, there were two what we call other matters. So in nine, in every other state, the union, this would not be reported in, in the report themselves. It would be a supplementary report to the board or not mentioned at all. So they're not anything that we deem to be significant. So what this means, when I give a definition of findings, there's things that go to the board and they have to rise to a level of material weakness or significant deficiency. What these other matters really come up to is, does not rise to the level of a significant deficiency. Okay? So they're not going to, they don't really take board action, but they're things that are going to let you know. They're detailed and we discussed them in, in, in detail, went over them. There's responses from the city to, to us as well as to the state about the, the correction plans. Those are included in pages one ninety-eight, one ninety-nine of the financial statements, and we went over them in detail. One thing I want to highlight, you resolved eight findings from the prior year. Okay, so I think that's a really big deal, how much was cleaned up, especially as, you know, we're entering a pandemic and stuff too. So there was a lot of, a lot of positives from a financial audit perspective. So I just wanted to point that out. New standard, really, GASB ninety-five was issued last year and it delayed everything. Okay, so all these standards that were about to be implemented were delayed a year. However, you still did early implement, you did, I quote-unquote, "early" GASB statement number eighty-four. That was for fiduciary activity. So there's a slight presentation change. There was no other changes within the city's financial statements as it came to budgeting or anything else, but there was a presentation change. Agency funds are now considered fiduciary activities and they're called custodial funds. So before the notes, you now have a statement of fiduciary net position, which you didn't have before. It used to be a statement of assets and liabilities for agency funds, and now there's a statement of, uh, revenues and expenses, state, statement of net changes and changes in net position for custodial funds. Okay? So you now have an income statement related to those. Not a huge of impact on the city at all. It's just the way that they're reported. And so there was a restatement there for that implementation of about twelve-thousand-seven-hundred dollars. So just to know that it's a change, you guys are one of the first cities that have now implemented that because everybody else delayed it. So the next couple that are, you're going to see coming up is going to be statement eighty-seven, which was originally slated for this year but was delayed. I think the city's still planning on early implementing in twenty-twenty-one. This is for leases. So what you're going to see is all leases are going to be considered capital leases. The, the, the standards have changed. There are no more any operating leases. So they go to the right-to-use asset and then the related liability. It's GASB's way of making sure all liabilities are accounted for because that's what we look at in government is where liabilities are. And then statement ninety-six is going to be really towards twenty-twenty-three. As for any subscription-based IT arrangements, so that's cloud computing, any sort of cloud computing and things like that, they're going to be accounted for similar to leases. They don't fall under a lease. They don't fall under an intangible, but they're going to have their own standard here in the next couple of years. Just some other things that we see within the industry, IT services. I know that you guys have had experience with this in the past. I had a phone call from a client today who improperly paid over four million dollars to someone. So it happens. You've done it. Many people have done it. Make sure you're assessing your IT. Okay? So ensure that the IT is being looked at. If I don't do that as part of the audit, we look to, we do analyze the system, but we analyze it for the recordability. We don't do phishing tests. We don't do risk, you know, IT risk assessment, threat assessments, penetration, internal and external tests and things like that. Have someone, if it's not us, somebody. We've got a group that's in Florida and Alabama and that's all they do. They're really good at it. If you're interested, do that, but be doing something. Vulnerabilities are our people. It does occur. Eighty-seven implementation, I know that we're actually helping with that as part of the audit contract. So as we go through, let us know. And then training, you know, we always invite you guys to different trainings as they're there. If you need anything specific, please don't hesitate to let us know. We're always here to help. And really with the that, I just want to say thanks. You know, I've worked with the city in some capacity for multiple years and I, I really do appreciate the opportunity to work with you. You know, Evelyn and Stephanie and Brian, you guys have always been great. I just thank you guys so much for, for the work. And if you guys have any questions, here's my information. So please reach out. Uh, Mayor Boss or any of the commissioners, please give, give me a call if, if you need me. What other questions do you all have for me?
I, I have a comment I'd like to make, AJ. Uh, you know, I, I've looked at a lot of some of the financial statements, and I've got to tell you, as far as the state of the findings and question costs, this year, I mean, that's about as insignificant as I've ever seen findings. And when you take into account some of the findings, the eight findings that we had last year, some of those were rather severe or, or were important. Every one of those were taken care of. And we, we have two little bitty things here that are pretty, pretty significant. I know they have to be noted. But I really believe that our financial staff needs to really, we really need to thank them, and they did a real strong pat on the back because that is a fantastic job, in my opinion, for this, to run this city financially and, and only have two, two problems. One of them was a seventy-dollar forty-eight cent on travel voucher, and the other was the super fine reconciliation, which in my mind, they're very important things, but they're pretty insignificant compared to what you see on a lot of other municipalities and governmental financial statements. Would you not agree with that?
But I, I would think it's extremely clean, and uh, one of the things I, I, you got to think about is, as we went into March last year, right? It, you kind of had this, or at, at the end of the year, in June thirtieth, you were operating in one environment, and then you had a transitional environment, and then a new environment. So, and we're still in some new environment, right? So your controls changed, and how you assess things changed. And so as auditors, we had to look at those controls before, during, and post COVID. I don't know what that means yet, but whatever that looks like. Okay? So we have to evaluate those control systems, we had to test for those risks, we had to take all of that into account. And so that is, it, there were an majority had an increase in findings, not a decrease, and it wasn't because they did a terrible job, it's because I don't know, we were dealt twenty twenty, and we dealt with it. Um, but everyone had to make adjustments and mistakes happen in chaos. And uh, I, I just want to, I, I mean, really, the team to do what they did, I think it's to clean things up and to be an improvement. It's, it's not the common that I've seen.
And I really, I love you and your staff. Thank you so much. We really, really appreciate you. AJ, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you guys so much.
Just to echo, yeah, just to echo what Mayor Boss said, I um, this is one, I always joke around that I'm not a construction person, I'm pretty dumb about that kind of stuff, but numbers are really my thing. Um, I probably should have been an accountant, and I, I really pay attention to that, not just um, our city, but I sort of look at all over the state school boards, I'm really kind of interested in, and you know, how audits, because it is, it's, it's a huge undertaking, and to be able to um, handle that much money and, and have all these moving parts and come out with an audit that's clean like that is, it's pretty impressive. And I know that I've seen others that have not been um, so fortunate this year. And um, right here, um, even, even close to home, and so um, it's just a testament to our employees and, and how hard they work and how diligent they are. Um, and making sure that, that we are being the very best stewards we can of uh public tax dollars. And so I just want to echo what you said. Yes, thank you. I, I am super, I was really excited when I heard about it, and I'm even more excited now that I just saw it. So congratulations to all of you.
Do you want to add some comments? AJ, thank you very much for your presentation. Very well done. I'd like to approve the fiscal twenty-two, fiscal twenty-five, oh, I'm sorry. Consider Resolution twenty-twenty-one fifteen for acceptance and approval of the fiscal year twenty audit. A motion from Commissioner Payne to uh, Revolution twenty-twenty-one dash fifteen, do I hear a second? And a second from Commissioner Wright. Oh, I'm sorry, roll call, roll, we'll turn, please, call roll.
Jason Baldwin.
Hi.
Nadia Sykes. Josh Rudin. Sharon McDonald. Dusty Wright. Susan Payne. Richard Buss.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank, thank all of you. Move on to item six, Consider Act Upon Resolution Number twenty-twenty-one dash sixteen, requesting internal approval from the local government division of the, of the Department of Financial Administration, State of New Mexico, to adopt the preliminary twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two budget as of May eleventh, twenty-twenty-one. Evelyn, you have some comments for us on that?
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners, uh, this is the same budget that we presented to you a week ago um, during our budget workshops. So what we are requesting approval now is to submit it in a preliminary phase to um, the Department of Finance Administration. This is something that has to happen before May thirty-first. So this would be our preliminary budget that would be in effect for about thirty days um, from July first to July thirty-first. As we um, get our balances done, get everything um that we need to get done for the end of the year, and then on July twenty, we will bring you the final budget, um, that has the cash balances, carryovers, any corrections, the final payroll projection, everything like that. So this is the same budget you saw last Tuesday, we're just requesting permission to send it to DFA.
Want to add any, a motion regarding this?
I had a question. Uh, this, I'll spark more for Evelyn or maybe the tree. I had a quick question in, in the legal budget in the general fund, um. I've gone back and read through this, you know, in twenty twenty, we had two hundred fifty-nine thousand, seven forty-four, and we had an assistant city attorney budgeted that year. And then in twenty-one and twenty-two, we have two seventy-nine, fifty-eight, and you know, seven eighty-three. But we don't have an assistant attorney budgeted in our staffing. Where's the extra money going there?
I can add, sure. So we beefed up a couple of the other lines because we only have one attorney. We um outsourced the municipal prosecution, so we have monies allocated to that line. And then we also um added additional money into the contract services line. That line is usually given almost all back to the city. It's more of a just-in-case, in case we need legal opinions. Um, but it's something that we put there to see, I, I can never predict at the beginning of the year what's going to happen or what legal opinions the commission will ask for. So it is there in sort of a just-in-case capacity, um, and that's where those funds are reallocated to.
So, so it's still in salaries and benefits, the, the extra, because that's what it's showing on here in our, in our paperwork, shows it's in the salary.
And I apologize, Commissioner Reardon, I didn't, I don't have my budget stuff right here. I had it at the hearings. Um, so I can certainly answer, get it to you.
So actually, in, in FY twenty-one, the position was included, but it was included as a non-funded position. So while technically we had it, we did not attach a budget to it in FY twenty-one. So there was a budget, the last time that a salaries and benefit budget was attached to that position was in FY twenty, and I believe it was staff for probably a short time during FY twenty. Um, and then that was it. So there was actually no salaries and benefits budgeted to that position last year.
So how can we not see a decrease in the salaries and benefits since we didn't? But it, and then also, other part of my question, are we anticipating potentially hiring another assistant attorney? And do we need to look at budgeting that in there?
At this point in time, I'm not anticipating requesting that um position be reinstated. So no, I don't, I mean, Commissioner Reardon, I can only predict what I can predict, but right now, the way the department is running, I believe we're running fine, and I have absolutely no plans for the next year to request that that position be funded. I'm happy, though, to, to get you my exact breakdown of my department, though, if you'd like, and I can get that to you tomorrow.
Okay, now, I'm just asking, like you said, going through this the other night again, and I'll get through it.
Sure.
Call that in there. Thought I'd ask tonight before we approved it. Thank you.
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion. I'm looking what we adopted preliminary twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two budget as of May eleventh, twenty-twenty-one.
Motion for Mayor Pro Tem Sykes to adopt I, item six, which is Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash sixteen. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, from Commissioner Payne. Will you vote for his call roll?
Jason Baldwin.
Hi.
Nadia Sykes. Josh Rudin. Sharon McDonald. Dusty Wright. Susan Payne. Richard Buss.
Motion passes seven zero. Before we move on to item, item seven, I would like to make a comment real quickly. I really appreciate the way the budget was presented to us at the budget hearing. Uh, we had three nights scheduled for that, and we did it at one, and I think that's because the organization was done so well on your part. There are some suggestions for next year, maybe to kind of key some of the things in where we don't have to sit here and search as much as we did. But as far as the presentation, I think it was awesome. You guys did a really, really good job on that. Thank you. To move on to item seven. Consider an act upon funding thirty thousand dollars for fireworks displayed for July fourth of twenty-twenty-one and provide directions to staff on how commission wants to proceed for future years in the MOU. All right, Josh, you ready to finish your reading on this? Do you have some comments regarding this?
Yeah, so I just brought this forward. Uh, we've seen numerous phone calls on this in the last two months. And uh, the other day, I was told we haven't, uh, ever gotten hashed out. Um, the commission was never asked, and how we want to proceed on this. Um, uh, we've been doing this play in Almagordo, I know, for at least the last forty years. Um, I've heard it's been longer than that, but I'm not that old, so um, I just wanted to bring it forth to the commission so that we can, you know, at least guarantee for this year that, that the show will go on. And, and then staff can hash it out with them, how we want to proceed uh in future years. The fireworks display. It, it's a value to the community. I mean, anybody that goes out on, on uh, the Fourth of July and looks, I mean, there's people out all over town watching this display in the front yards, they go to Grigsfield, they go up there to Scenic Drive. I mean, I see people sitting on the roofs of their houses watching it. Um, I just, I think it's very, very valuable to the community for us to, to uh fund this and, and put the show on. On the other side of that, it actually uh helps, you know, because instead of somebody going and buying fireworks and potentially starting fires going in their front yard by setting them off, they would rather watch this. And so I, I just thought we needed to bring it, the commission's attention and, and get it figured out, how we want to proceed.
I think everyone here probably agrees with that. Do you have any comments uh regarding this? Chief Manager Susan, right?
Okay, uh, this is, and we're going to continue finding these things. Um, it was a concern last year, uh, last minute, the foundation, the Space Hall Foundation, uh, they're not part of the state, they're like, concerned, sort of like the Friends of the Library. Um, I asked for a copy of their contract last year. Our MOU or any type of documentation between the city and the foundation that allowed for the expenditure of taxpayer funds, transferring those funds to the foundation and letting, having them do the procurement of the, of the fireworks uh for their annual, I don't want to call it a fundraiser, but the, but the, the show that's put on. Um, it was very last minute last year, they weren't able to find anything. We searched all our records, we don't have a record of an MOU, a contract, any type of agreement uh going all the way back to at least nineteen ninety-four. In addition, for what the, what the foundation, the Space Hall Foundation is, is providing for the city, it's actually a violation of the state procurement rules. Um, we can't just shift money over to another entity so that they can go out and do the procurement for the city of Almagordo. Um, so what we looked at a month and a half ago, or thereabouts, was coming up with an MOU with the, with the foundation, uh, so that we were, we were covered. Uh, we are going to have to self-report to the AG, but it's always best when you self-report to show this is how the issue was cured. In meeting with uh Johnny Powell from the foundation and Cliff Hudson, who is the chairman, uh, we hashed out an MOU through the discussion, uh, a preliminary MOU through the discussion. Uh, one of the things that kept coming up was what a value it is not only to Almagordo, but to the and the surrounding community, but also to the county. So what was proposed to them, uh, starting after this year was that every year for the, for the next three years, it would go down, the city contribution would go down by five thousand dollars until it reached fifteen thousand dollars in twenty twenty-four. They left this office, or my office, I'm sorry, my office, not an issue. Uh, there were a number, uh, that, that that, that MOU is in, is in the packet. Um, once it word got around, that's when some of the phone calls had started, and Commissioner Reardon contacted me. Um, and we had lengthy discussions on how felt, staff felt this violated not only the state procurement rules, but also anti-donation. Um, because they, the foundation does use this, use the city fireworks uh as a fundraiser for what they do up at the Space Hall. There was some disagreement between the two of us. Uh, Commissioner Reardon wanted this on for an item tonight, so to be sure that city staff, that we were correct, um, I asked the city attorney to get an outside legal opinion, which she has, not the official version, but she understands that better than I do. Um, and what we have been told is, yes, this entire time, the city has been violating the uh, the state procurement rules. They were surprised that our auditors had not, had not picked up on this, but as you heard in the presentation from the auditors, they don't look at every transaction. Um, so this is just one that has gotten by every auditor for the past how I, however many years. Um, so once we had that opinion, I mean, obviously, staff, we want to see the, the fireworks go on. Uh, so um, we brainstormed here in City Hall and came up with a new MOU between the city and the uh Space Hall of Fame Foundation. Um, in a nutshell, that's the, the second MOU that you see in there. Basically, what it says is the city of Almagordo will procure uh through, following the state procurement rules, we will, we will select a vendor following the state rules. Um, we will have to put on some type of Fourth of July event uh that is, that is the city's, that is separate from the Space Hall. What we're requesting of the foundation is that they allow our vendor to fire the, the um, the fireworks from the traditional location. There is a little hiccup with that. Um, the foundation uh has, does not have and has not had permission from the state of New Mexico to use state property for their fundraising event. So they, from what they told me last week, uh, they thought they would have an answer from the state by uh, uh, last Friday uh that would allow them to at least have one year uh where they may have to lease it. Um, I let them know that time is of the essence because the city, we have to go out to bid. Um, and one of the things that the vendor is going to need to know is where are they launching the fireworks from? Um, if the foundation is unable to secure an agreement with the state of New Mexico, then we, we, the city, we will relocate. Um, obviously, we can't fire from state land, uh, and launch from possibly, excuse me, the detention basin uh in, in the public works yard. The Fourth of July event um that the city will be putting on, because that is one of the things that was in the unofficial legal opinion, uh, is that we have to have, we, the city, have to put on a, an event around those, around the fireworks. So we will have an event at Griggs Field. I don't have the detail for you all tonight on that. But that will be coming at the commission meeting on the 20, the 25th. Josh Sides, the Special Events Coordinator, Ronnie Ortega, the Community Services Director, will be, will be presenting that at the next commission meeting. In speaking with, with Cliff Hudson and Johnny Powell, Cliff had said that they can call a emergency meeting and have the MOU signed. But what I let them know is it doesn't do us any good to have the MOU signed without a copy of their agreement with the state that it allows for at least this year, the city being able to fire, or for them to allow us to fire from the traditional location. But regardless of whether they're able to, to, whether they're able to get that, that lease agreement, or whatever type of agreement with the state, we will still be able to, to have a fireworks show. It just may not be launched from the traditional site.
My question is on that, Brian. First off, you know, 20 years worth of audits, nobody's picked this up. That seems a little far-fetched.
That's not a new, that's not a new one at all.
I've got the floor, guys. Hold on. Okay, and if you read in there, in the, the, hold on just a second, let me get the name of it. The NMAC that I had you add in there, 1.04, section, it's 1.4.1.17, section B. It says that anything under $60,000 does not need to go to competitive sealed bid. And that was our discussion the other night.
I, I, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't say it would go to competitive sealed bid under the, in spending $30,000, because that's what we have budgeted for this year. Actually, what we have budgeted for next year. At that threshold, we have to have three written quotes.
We can go on and get three written quotes.
We are going to go get three written quotes. We can't have the Space Hall, the Space Hall Foundation do that for us. It has to be the city of Almagordo.
Whenever they turn their invoice in, do they, do we send the money to them? Or do they give us the invoice and we pay the invoice direct to that contractor that sets the?
They have given the invoice to the city, the city has paid it direct. The other thing that I understand that has happened in previous years is that the city has paid a portion of the service upfront, which is also something that is, is not, is not allowed. It has to be sealed bids, and we're going out on a, you know, like a typical construction bid. No, that's not what we're doing. We have to go out on three, have three written quotes.
But my thing is, is we're not giving the money to the foundation. Essentially, they're giving us the invoice, and then we're paying.
But the, but the issue with that is, is the foundation, the city is not involved in selecting the, the vendor for the fireworks. The foundation is going out, picking someone, negotiating with them, and then saying, getting a bill from the, from the fireworks vendor, or the company setting off the fireworks, turning that invoice to the city and saying, okay, you need to pay this. We don't have, we don't have anything in writing that allows for that. There really isn't anything that, that could be done to allow them to do that because we're circumventing the, our procurement ordinance, or the state, the state procurement ordinance. We have to, we have to.
We don't get the written quotes. How are we circumventing the, the state's procurement?
Because we've never, we've never received any, any quotes. They haven't gone, to my knowledge, they have not gone out competitively. I know it has been the same vendor for at least the past five years that I remember. Probably longer than that. And I'm not saying there's anything wrong with that company. I'm not saying that the foundation was trying to do something underhanded, shady, or the city staff was. This is one of those things that has just carried on, and it was, it was the way that it was always done. It's been done incorrectly, and these are the things that we have to correct. This will be a finding in next year's audit because we will have to report this also to the auditors when they, when they come back in in October, November, whenever. It's, it's coming up soon. I know that.
As you say, or Patricia said, we do have a legal opinion, but we were in violation. Am I correct?
Correct, Mayor Buss. We also spoke to the auditors about it, and they have a major issue with it as well. I did speak with Charles Rennick, who comes highly recommended. I mean, he's well-known as an expert in governmental municipality law, and we've used him previously. I posed the question to him, and he immediately said, this is a big, big problem we shouldn't do, and we immediately need to self-report. The reason why it hasn't come up in an audit is because they just, we've kind of gotten lucky, they haven't pulled that invoice. Yeah, this is part of, I think, what we've discussed before, where we don't want to do things on handshakes anymore. We want to put everything in writing on a contract and just make sure we do it right. So hopefully, we can work this so that Almagordo still gets its fireworks show.
And that, I don't really, now, you all can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't really see a downside in, in this latest MOU. Assuming the foundation can secure permission from the state, fireworks will get launched from where they used to be launched from. The city of Almagordo will go out, will follow the state procurement rules, will get the three written quotes, will select the, the lowest bidder. They will fire from, if the foundation gets the, gets the, an agreement with the state, will fire from where traditionally fireworks have been, have been shot off for 20-plus years. In the MOU, they, they allow for, obviously, our fire department to be up where the fireworks are being launched from. Actually, we get one more small event over at Griggs Field, well, Griggs Field this year, where there's a, a, a small event put on for the Fourth of July, and not just the, not just the parade. We're not proposing that we're going to do some massive blowout at Griggs Field. But this, this allows for the fireworks to be shot off from where they were shot off in the past. It's still, you know, just as you approved the, or the entire commission approved the preliminary budget in the last item, through the budgetary process, if we come in and say, hey, it was $30,000 last year, but we only want to put in $10,000 towards fireworks, and it's ultimately commission's budget, and you can say, no, we want, we want to see the, the original 30,000, or we want 50,000 in there. So really, the foundation, the foundation doesn't lose anything, and the city comes into compliance. We, we do the self-reporting, which is always better than the auditors finding it or a complaint going into the AG's office, and now they're investigating what we've done. We, we self-report, we've corrected the issue, and, and we move on. Now, there's really nothing in the city we can do for the foundation. They will have to work with the, with, with Santa Fe to, to get permission for them to hold their event up at the Space Hall, the concert and stuff that they put on, or whatever they're having this year. I know they're having a band or two, or they plan to anyway. Really, it's, it's them, for their event, they need to secure the location, and if they're able to, to do that, we will launch from where, where they've always been launched in the past. If they're not able to do that, then I don't think we should cancel the show because the foundation doesn't have an agreement with the state. We, the city, will just have to find a alternate location to launch from. And if they, if the foundation isn't able to secure it this year, there's nothing saying that the city of Almagordo cannot approach the state of the Space Hall and the state next year and secure the area on the city's behalf for the, for the launch, not for the, not for the event, but the Space Hall. So I, I, I don't see, I don't see a real downside this year. Or for future years, for that matter, we, we're adding, we're adding an event on the Fourth of July.
If we have them $30,000, there will be a big downside. Even after we reported, if we give them the $30,000 and let them do it as they did it in prior years, then we, we are breaking the law.
Well, now, now we know, staff knows, it was, it was not done correctly in the past. And I'm not throwing stones at anybody, but it wasn't done correctly in the past. We, we know that, and what we're trying to do is correct it. This, the second, the second MOU corrects that. But if the foundation can't secure the state property, then we, we launch from, from a piece of city property. Or we find another private property owner, or next year, we could enter into an agreement with the, with the state, between the city and the state, to launch from, from the Space Hall site. It's just that, you know, we're already at the 11th of May. They've already done the, the legwork up to now to try and come to an agreement with the state. I don't want to try and get in the middle of that now. We don't have enough time to do it. We have to get, we have to go out and, and secure those quotes.
Brian, your, your original MOU that you have in the package, if we were to prove that tonight, then technically, we're breaking the law as well, right?
Yeah, that's, that one's been thrown out. I just included it because that's what we were going with, going with first. As we dug deeper into it, that's, we can't, we can't do that, but I wasn't going to hide. Here was, here was our first stab at, let's try and get an agreement between the city and the foundation so that we can move forward. Digging deeper, that MOU is, is thrown out. It will not work. The second MOU that has, as item two, the city of Almagordo agrees to procure the fireworks for the 2021 fireworks show solely at their own expense, that MOU, there is, there is absolutely nothing wrong with that. Because it's saying that we will go out, we will follow procurement rules, we will secure the bids, the quote, the written quotes. The Space Hall, we, they will give us permit, the Space Hall Foundation will allow us to use the original site, assuming that they have secured the agreement from the state. If they haven't, then we launch, we launch elsewhere, and we don't, this MOU will not be, will not be executed unless, unless they come, unless they have the agreement in hand from the state that allows the foundation to, to hold their event and launch fireworks from state land.
The area where they shoot from up there, is that even state property?
That is state.
From the south, they shoot south of the, of the museum over there off of the Taze property, don't they?
That, that's not, that's not the Taze property. It's, it's adjacent to the Taze property, but that is, that is Space Hall of Fame state property.
Yeah, I just, I find it hard to believe after 20 years and numerous city attorneys and city managers, nobody's ever caught this before. And I think with audits, we've had one every year. We actually ought to report to the state auditor and not the AG's office. That they would be the entity that would oversee this particular issue, not the AG. So just so y'all know on that one.
We would require to port, to report to both because the anti-donation issue is an attorney general issue.
I don't think there's an anti-donation issue. There's a benefit to the community.
I have a legal opinion in writing telling me that there is. I must report. That is the standard. Ethically, we must.
To the community by having this event. I mean, it's.
We're still having the event.
We're going to have the event.
I understand that.
Okay.
There were some other conversations before that were had on this, and, but, like I say, we just need to get it to where we can have our event this year, have fireworks, and.
We have it, we have it, we have it set up to where we can have the event regardless of what happens with the Space Hall of Fame Foundation and their negotiations with, with the state of New Mexico.
How come nobody's ever caught that, that the foundation didn't have permission to use the land up there? How come in 20 years, we've never had that?
Because no, no one had asked the question. The same reason that, from the city's standpoint, from the city's side, no one had asked the question. It's something that had been done, had always been done. That's why we're questioning it now, when the.
The prior MOU from, you said we had one back in like 94 or 93?
We've never had, we've never had to, the city clerk's office, legal, the city clerk's office, legal, they searched the records. We don't have any record of an MOU, an agreement, anything like that between the city and the Space Hall of Fame Foundation. They dug back through their records. They don't have anything. The state of New Mexico, they looked through their records. They don't have anything. That's, that's what's, that's what's created the issue. If, you know, it's, if the question's not asked, you're not always going to find it. The, the auditors throughout the past 20 years haven't pulled the, the invoice for fireworks. I don't know why they haven't, but they haven't. They don't pull, like, as AJ explained, whether it's his firm or it's any other firm, they don't pull every transaction. And normally, they're looking at, you know, like our FEMA grants. They're looking at, they're looking at the larger transactions. They're, they're very focused in what, in what they, what they look at. And they, they do rely, not just for the city of Almagordo, but the other municipalities and counties and whatnot that they, they do audits for. A lot of it, they, they rely on, on, on us to say, hey, we have some concerns in this area. Will you look at, will you look at, we look at the senior center and our transactions there? Or we have a concern in the way that we've been doing this, this, how we've been doing the fireworks every year. In, in the case of this, we're going to have to, in the next audit, remind them, they're already aware of it, but remind them that we did have, we had this issue, and, and it's been, it's been corrected, and this is how it's, how, how it's been corrected. So it will be a finding, but in that finding, it's going to, it's going to show where the city found it. We corrected it. We didn't try and just do it for one more year and correct it in the new fiscal year. We corrected it in the year we found it. We still get the, we still get the finding for it. But now, instead of them finding it and questioning us, we've self-reported. So that's, while it's still a finding, it's, it's better that we, well, and it's what we, it's what we're required to do. But it's better that, that we're bringing it to their attention than having, having them go look for it, find it, or, you know, someone else go and find it.
Mayor Proctor Sykes has a question. I'm Lou.
Yes, I am. Okay. Clarification, Chief Manager. We have a memorandum. Can you hear me?
Can you take off your mask, please? Or take it down?
I, I just want some clarification because this is a, a multi-level confusing issue. First of all, I really want to say that I love the tradition of fireworks. And two, think it's a benefit to the community. I know that the community involves not only the city, but it involves the county and the surrounding area. So we can be talking about how it's going to be funded later. But I, as I understand it right now, in order to sign the second memorandum, the second MOU that the city staff develop, we have to wait for the foundation to get permission from the state, correct?
Yes, because what, what the second MOU, what the second MOU does is grant the city's vendor, the fireworks vendor, permission to fire from, from the traditional location, which is on state property. So.
We're not necessarily going to be doing anything with this tonight because we can't until we get permission, right?
Right. No, no, there, there, there isn't anything really, no, there isn't anything for, for commission, commission to sign or to, to agree to.
Yeah, number seven on the agenda, now that we've all been enlightened with the fact that we're violating not only the procurement laws,
but the anti-donation.
but the anti-donation laws. Number seven should just be, I, I, I don't even know what you call it. We need to eradicate it from the agenda. We are being coerced into potentially doing something illegal, and I would like to just, we can't table it, but we just need to get rid of it.
Table it indefinitely.
I, I, tabling it indefinitely just means that it's still going to be part of our record, and what we were doing was potentially doing something illegal. So how do we, how do we just say whoops and get it off here?
We brought it forward, and we discussed if they told us why we cannot do it.
We're not going to act on it.
We're not going to act.
Okay, so we're not going to act on it?
We're going to act. We're going to table it. We have to table it. We have to do something with it, I'm assuming. We table it and, or take no action? We table it and, or take no action?
Okay, then I, at this moment, I would like to move that we table, number seven.
We will have to bring this MOU back once they get permission for us to use their land up there to shoot from.
I don't think we need to take action on that because just tonight it's a moot point.
By the next meeting or before the Fourth of July, we'll have to approve this MOU in order for them allow us to use the land.
I don't handle all that tonight. What we need to do is, we have, there is a motion to table item seven, which is Consider Act upon funding thirty thousand dollars for fireworks display July fourth, twenty twenty-one. We've had, we've had a comment.
Right.
Brian, say it's off, Brian.
What you, unless there are major issues with the second MOU. Oh, wait, Patrice is telling me, no, never mind. She's about, so tell me why I can't do this, why you can't do this.
We made two changes to this MOU, passed the agenda deadline, which just had to do with insurance coverage that we were requiring of the fireworks vendor. So, we will have to bring it back with the two new items that don't materially affect the city of Almagordo at all. Just protect us liability and are items that the, actually, the foundation asked for as well. So, tonight, no action is fine or tabling it is fine.
Okay, next to Brian.
Okay. I, well, what I wanted to say was, first of all, thank you for looking into this because I, I had some real concerns about this after I saw this. I had seven hours on the road to research this and, and really look into this and I was concerned about it for, for a number of reasons and I, I find out that I was on track with that. And the other thing is, is I find it, I, you know, if anybody's watching out there, if they're listening to this, I've received one phone call about this and that was probably about three months ago. And it was, we heard they're going to cancel the fireworks show. We can't cancel it. And I said, I didn't know anything about it. I checked into it. That was not a true statement. And I called that person back. I haven't received, I don't know, have anybody else received any calls about this?
Numerous.
Numerous? Like, did you receive more than one?
I received one.
One.
At the time, it seems like it was closer than three months ago, maybe.
And it could have been. It wasn't, there's a lot going on this year, so. But I have not received numerous calls and I find that unfortunate because that's why I was so taken back by this agenda item because I, I received one phone call a few months ago. That was it. So, I don't know if, you know, maybe, you know, I don't know, maybe I'm not approachable. Some people say that about me, whatever. But, but my point is, is you received numerous calls, this is on the agenda and, you know, I guess really what I should say is thank you to those people that called you because it just opened up a huge can of worms and now we're cleaning it up like we found with, well, no, I, I'm just saying, we found this. In my five years on the commission, I, I can, I can't even tell you the number of times we found these kinds of problems and it's concerning to me that we are running government. We're running government this way because.
We're not running government that way now.
That's my. And that is my point. My point is that it was concerning to me that we were running, not us, in the past, that we were running government that way. And I just hope that in the future, you know, I, I hope this is the last of it. I hope we, because we have cleaned it up. We've cleaned it up a lot. I, I mean, and we've cleaned up a lot of things, certainly since my time on the board, I mean, on the commission and, and so, you know, I hope this is the last of it, but I, I'm just, I'm concerned because I, I did not receive numerous calls about this. And so, I don't know, I, I have no idea why, you know, I don't know. I don't know. But anyway, so thank you for looking into that and, and getting that taken care of because I think that's important. And I'm excited about this new direction with us participating more. I think that that's, you know, that's going to be a good thing. It'll be a, a small event. Maybe it'll get bigger, bigger over the years, but it's exciting that, that we're going to have this new opportunity now, so.
A motion from Mayor Prokets Sykes to table item seven. Do I hear a second?
A second.
A second from Commissioner Payne. Who would have favored I?
I.
When you told your name. I hear it, ma'am.
Second I.
So, most of the past seven zero, I presume, correct? We'll move on to item eight, notification of vacancies for boards and committees. And we're in a really good situation, in my opinion, with all our boards and our councils and everything. We only have, pretty, it's a couple of vacancies and I remember we have a pretty long list, but there's no, there's no appointments current, but I'd like to read where we do have some openings. Airport zoning board, there's one vacancy. We have no applications for that one. Teenage volunteer program advisory council, there's one vacancy. This vacancy is due to the expiring term of Cynthia Stevenson. We didn't receive any applications on that one. I have, we've only got two openings in all of these things. I think that's really a fantastic position we're in. If anyone is interested in serving on a board or a committee, you may apply to the city clerk's office or online at the city clerk's site. If there is no further business for the city, do I hear a motion to guarantee the grant of co-section and compliance with ten dash fifteen dash one eight seven NMSA as a measure to be self-secured on pending litigation related on PRD lawsuit and responsible KLA lawsuit regarding encroachment of city property?
Thank you, Mr. Payne.
I have a motion from Commissioner Payne.
A second.
Second from Commissioner Wright. He put this all wrong.
Mason Baldwin.
Hi.
Nadia Sykes. Josh Roden. Sharon McDonald. Rusty Wright. Richard Bus.
Seven zero. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned to the record session.